Know that I've been having internet issues. Random times, my internet will drop off. If it does drop off, Carl will keep going. I'll log on as fast as I can get back on. And start the recording again, and then I'll splice the recordings together. So if we miss some stuff. It it just a synopsis for those who are watching this on a video would be. Appreciated and know that you didn't miss too much. So, welcome to week four of our study session for high school football out of New Mexico and our Colorado brethren. Appreciate all of the the support and feedback that we've received from everybody. Um, we've done every position up until this point, except for back judge. We're gonna, we're, we're gonna look at back judge. In the sense that we're back judge centric, but it means that we, we all understand that we work as a crew and that we need to operate as a crew, but. Just some things that back judges can, can think about and also special teams and. Like Carl will say, and, and, and everybody said so far, the, the. When the crap hits the fan, it's, it's hitting the fan usually during a, a. A special teams play, whether it's a kickoff or a punt return. Or um, a PAT, it's all those, all those. And so those are, and those are a lot of the rules that we have too, that, that we don't always. Home down on. So some of the information that we're gonna go over tonight, just as good understanding of the rules and. Um, what have you? Again, participation is encouraged. If you have something to. For the betterment of the group, we encourage you to take yourself off mute and chime in. Um, we appreciate that. We've had some really great discussions. Um, and everybody's been real awesome. Um, I really appreciate everybody's support again, and thank you, Carl, for. Popping up and getting all these videos out there and everything that you do. Um, it is a lot of work on, on your part and. I really appreciate what you've done to, to facilitate this, so.
Yeah, and there's been a whole lot of folks that have provided some really good clips, so I appreciate that. So.
Carl, you got it.
Yeah, so we, we'll start with some free kick stuff, uh, just, just keep an eye. Some of this stuff. May not come, may not hit you right out of the gate, but stuff happens, can happen right at the beginning of any game, so. Okay, so just keep an eye on a couple of guys here, then, uh, so on the kicking team for five man. It's a back judge, right? As the kicking team. And on a four man, that's gonna be the H. So. So we'll just go back and.
Slow it down.
I'll slow it down. And see, you have to ask yourself, would you flag something like this, or is this a talk too? And then flag the next time it happens, because it ended up being a big play for the receiving team. So where are these guys at when the ball's contact? Are they well beyond the line?
If this was a, um, trying for an onside, these guys have clearly broken the plane of that, that line before the kick.
And did our, did our back judge move a little prematurely?
I don't know why he's moving at all downfield.
No, neither.
But the play. He's supposed to drop in, get in the middle of the field. Straight in.
So you just have to ask yourself, what, what will you live with and talk to? The coach or, or the kicking team in general, or whatever. Maybe the next time you have a free kick, you're out there talking to them. To me, I think personally, I think this is a, this is definitely needs to be killed. It's not like a half a step or something, you know?
And Carl, it's two, it's two dudes, like one guy leaning is something, but for me, when two guys are gone, are across. It's a blow, and remember, this is a play we kill. We would kill, we would kill this immediately.
We would kill this.
So, and also for you, I had pre-gaming with your back judge or your head, your H. That if we have a, um, free kick infraction that's killed. Um, what the signals are, because they're the ones that are now doing the signal at and marching. And placing the ball five yards back. So it's a free kick infraction with a five yard penalty, dead ball. Free kick infraction against the kicking team and it's five yard penalty replay the kick.
Brad said he was gonna give a Buffalo Wild Wings gift certificate if you can figure out what's wrong with this one. No, I'm just kidding. So, all right, this is, this is funky.
Hey Carl, can we go back to that last one?
Sure.
So as a bag judge, initial alignment. Um, easily, I'm okay with that. His back foot's on the forty, uh, his. Downfield foot could be on the forty-one, um, to get that angle looking in. Um, yeah, and philosophy wise, as long as. You know, those guys, their foot's not down yet. You know, they're not really gaining advantage yet, but that's gonna be, you know, splitting hairs. And you gotta really think about like, can you be consistent on a call like that with this? You know, the, the, uh, be the number two. Uh, receiver on, you know, top of the forty, his foot was down just beyond the line, you know, that, that's gonna be. Splitting hairs, trying to get that and be consistent, it's gonna be hard, so. Yeah, if he's a full yard beyond and. The ball's kicked and yeah, we wanna flag and kill it, but. And it depends on the fly to the kick, you know, this one's a kind of a squib, so they do get an advantage. Being beyond the ball when it's kicked, so. You know.
So.
I'm the insider, I'm telling my guys, you know. Flag this, if it's, now if it's a deep kick inside the twenty, between the twenty and the goal line, I'm letting it go. But this one's a kind of a deep pooch kick, where they're getting an advantage. By being beyond the ball when it's kicked, foot down. Um, yeah, and he doesn't need to be moving, he should be stationary watching. Watch.
So Leonard, I think what you might be saying is, uh, talk to that kicking team next time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz you know, just. Let those kids know, when you, when you hand off the ball to the kicker, the next time, you know, look down there and be like, hey. Make sure you're not pop, uh, you know, pass the ball before it's a kick.
Right.
So.
This is, this is a funky one. So did you see what happened?
Hmm.
The other guy kicked it.
Okay, do we have a problem with that?
Well, yeah, because the kicker, the, the kicker, no, no. The kicker is back behind five yards, so that's the problem. And he doesn't kick it, so he is now a player who is not in that five yard zone.
Right.
So it's, it's a procedural problem.
So this is a, this is a dead, dead ball foul? You wanna kill it?
Yep, yep.
That's right.
Yep.
It's a free kick infraction, again, kill the play. It's rule six. Article three B. And, um, it talks about no player other than the kicker is allowed to be more than five yards. Beyond, behind the, the ball and nobody besides a holder and the kicker is allowed to be. In front of the ball, um, but the, the key here is in B is. If one K player is more than five yards behind this restraining line. And any other player kicks the ball, it is a foul. So if this is a, the coach is gonna ask you, what did we do wrong? So it's important that our line of scrimmage guys understand that. If they wanna make this right, everybody has to be within that five yards. As soon as they put somebody further than five yards out. That person is the kicker and he's the only one allowed, or she is the only one allowed to kick that ball.
Right.
So.
So what they ended up doing, they ended up flagging the kicking team anyway, because the ball rolled out of bounds. Without being touched, so that one has the four options that you can administer. All right. This is, this is, okay, this is not what it appears to be, but it looks just like what it could be. Watch the ball go straight up in the air. Okay, so. Anything wrong with that? It went straight up in the air. What, there was a rule emphasis a few years ago. What was that? What was it called?
You can't drive the ball on the ground.
Right, pop-up, pop-up kick. So this is, obviously, this doesn't meet the definition of a pop-up kick, however, it's kicked straight up in the air and. The whole reason they added that rule, right, is because now you have a defenseless player looking straight up in the air at the ball and he gets creamed. Right? Well, that could have happened here, but it didn't. I mean, receiving team had no clue where the ball is, so I just, we didn't, I didn't have an actual pop-up kick violation. I've thrown a few of them. It could happen. So if they drive that ball on the ground, it's, it's a dead ball, kill it.
Durango has run this play for the last couple of years, almost identical to this. The kid's real good. He, he kicks it. It's not a pop-up. He kicks it up and they have hit the guy a few times, so we've had kid, um, catch interference.
Catch interference, yeah.
Yeah, cuz they've run the guy, their, their timing's not great and especially the, they'll do it once and then they'll even try it again. And then they'll get better, but the first, but I, we've seen it here.
Also on that play, did the kicking team touch the ball before it touched the ground?
Yeah, illegal touching, right?
No, it didn't. It hit the ground.
Okay. Alright, so. So the, so when we, when we talk about definitions, it's under kicks in section twenty-four of rule two. And it's article ten, a pop-up kick is a free kick in which the kicker drives the ball immediately into the ground, the ball strikes the ground once the. Once it goes into the air and a matter of the ball directly off the team.
Somebody, somebody needs to mute.
Yep, and so then in article stick or rule stick. Um. It talks about pop-up kicks, it, it's just one line, a pop-up kick is illegal. So it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't say much about it, but it is, um. It just says, yeah, pop-up kick is a, and it's a free kick infraction also. Um, it needs to, to be killed right away. And then that five yards in, in, in re-kick, so.
Okay, so we had a, this is a free kick, and so anything can happen. Live ball or dead ball, so keep, keep an eye out. Things can get really crazy here. So we're gonna watch this player right here. Says, okay. I don't, I don't like this guy, so I think I'm gonna just blast it. And of course, the guy gets up with a hand saying, hey, what, what happened here? So we just gotta be mindful, this is. Dead ball, I think a dead ball personal foul. Is this an ejection or a disqualification worthy? I, I don't know. But. Any thoughts, discussion?
I'd say, no, I'd say it's just fifteen yard penalty. Actually, it's a block in the back, isn't it?
Yeah, a block in the back is, is a ten yard penalty, a blind side block is.
This is, this is a dead ball personal foul. The tackles are, that's my opinion, yeah.
Yeah.
I, it's a dead ball personal foul. The guy had no, all he wanted to do was just. There, he's, he sees the action in front of him. Is he actually keeping this guy from tackling anybody?
It's far enough away from the action that you can get him without, whether it's live or dead.
Yeah.
Correct. He's hitting the guy not involved in the play.
Yep.
So. Obviously, I think the line judge has the best look perhaps, but you know, it's something all of us as a crew need to be mindful of on especially special teams plays.
And, and talking about not getting that, and we can prove, white hats, we can pregame this to not get that tunnel vision. And, and if you're away from the play, opening up our, our vision to, to see more than is around. If the play is at your feet. By all means, go in and get the spot, but if it's away from you, open it up and look for those. People swimming upstream.
So this one, go ahead.
Brad, can you go back to that previous play, please?
Sure, Carl. Can you do that?
Yep.
Hey. Right there, you see that hitting the block in the back, that was the kicking team and somebody said it was a block in the back. How can it be from the kicking team on a dead ball play? And it looks like here from the white hat, he had a good view of it.
Well, the line judge has the best. But yeah, a white hat could help.
The white hat has a good view of it right here.
Either team can commit a block in the back.
Yeah, that's what I was about to say. There's no distinction of a block, blocking that has to be on the, the offense, it can happen.
If, if he's pursuing, if, if that defensive player is close proximity to the ball carrier. And he pushes a guy in the back to get him out of the way to pursue the ball carrier, it's legal. This, however, is way away from the play, so it is not gonna be legal.
Yeah.
And again, I had a play like this and I talked to George Dimitro about it, and he said, kinda like what we're saying, when in doubt, this is a personal foul. But because on this, on this kinda situation.
Yeah, if, if it was a, if, let's just say this was a, a block and a true block in the back, it's away from the play, we shouldn't be flagging.
Nope. Personal foul.
Just, it's a personal, in my opinion, I think it's a personal.
And in, and in George's, same thing, cuz I, I asked him about one like this.
Okay, this is kind of a kudos play here. Good communication. So we got the back judge pointing to the line, to the H. And the H is pointing back to the back judge, and so why are they, what are they communicating to each other?
Um.
In. Nothing.
Inbounds goal line, inbounds goal line corner.
They're, they're both saying it's your call.
No, no, I, in my opinion, I don't think that's right. I think the back judge, if you watch the video, points to the, to the, to the H. And the H has given him a thumbs up. It's, he's, he's not out of bounds on the sideline.
So I don't agree with the thumbs up signal. I think if, uh, if he steps out of bounds, that, uh. Wing official is gonna kill the clock, and if he doesn't kill the clock, then he's telling him he's in bounds. He would make eye contact is good.
You mean?
Eye contact is good.
No communication between the back judge?
Oh, no, absolutely, there is, absolutely, there is. They should make eye contact, but I don't like thumbs up because that's saying it's a touchdown. When, you know, he still might be. Across the goal line or not. Right, and then if he's not doing anything, I do like him making eye contact, because if you don't make eye contact, the back judge doesn't know what he's got, period.
Yeah.
Yeah, talking about it's really important with your two wing guys as a back judge, really important.
Good thing to pregame, right?
Yep.
Okay, so back judge moving well, he's getting to the most important line on the field, which is the goal line to get ready to rule. And then. So there's any concerns with that?
Did he even see what the wing was doing on that play?
Well. I did, uh. That wasn't something that I was thinking about here, but that is important too, the communication, but. What, what does he kinda do after?
He looks away from action.
Dead ball officiating.
Yeah, he doesn't need to turn, he doesn't need to face the, the press box or anything, he can just go up.
Right, so that's, that's, I think that's good for all of us, right, especially the wings, um, right, is it. I, I, I can remember like it was yesterday, being told it doesn't matter what direction you face, you wanna dead ball officiate. So.
Don't you think one thing on that play, maybe as headlines there. We're running down the field too far and the back judge has got that play. We got a lot of players in back of us. That could be a problem for us.
Right, exactly.
But if you're the H, you have sideline, right? So isn't, go back to it, Carl, the, the plays. It's hitting the sideline, it's right up on the sideline, so this player could step out, so we are. We're watching the sideline.
Here's the H.
I think he's in a good position to, to make a call on in or out on the sideline. And the back judge is in good position to make a call, whether he crosses the.
And, and so.
End zone.
And so since the H is, is kinda trailing quite a bit. It's gonna be hard to make communication between the H and the back judge, right?
And, and I think the, the. Everybody picking up the garbage would be the, the R and probably the L.
The L, the L. Yeah. Okay, so here we go. Some monkey business gonna happen here. Let me just blow this guy up. Again, probably a dead ball personal foul. Things can happen. Did you, did everybody kind of agree? That was this really necessary here?
Head hunting around the pile.
So just, we gotta all be aware of this, this can happen anywhere, anytime. Um, so this one, this one was missed.
Wasn't flagged and, um, this is a playoff game. Uh, between rivals who played earlier in the season and. Um. And it was heated throughout the game and it seemed to. Cause some ill effects that we'll see later on, that we saw last.
We, we've, and we've already shown a few plays from this game already. Dead ball stuff.
Was that the same guy that had the shot in the back earlier?
I don't know if it's the same player, but the same activity is happening.
Same team though, right? Same game?
Oh, same game.
Wow.
Oh, yeah.
So that's two there, two of those.
There's actually, I think a total of three, but.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
That's why we watch this film, cuz we don't always see it on the field, and so that'll help us look hard on the field.
And it's, boy, it's, it, it happens so fast, it can just happen anytime. Okay, so we have a broken play, started out as a pass play, looks like the quarterback is now scrambling. And we're keeping an eye on this defensive back.
Ooh.
So.
Wow.
So who could help us with this one?
That's a back judge call.
Judge.
Cuz I think, I think the wings are gonna be focused on the QB scrambling, right? Cuz the, it's a broken down, it's not gonna be a pass play, it's broken. So we could probably stop where we're at as a wing. Just stop and observe players. Um, do we wanna observe right at the pile? Or should we observe more in the middle of the field about the swimming upstream stuff? No, I don't know.
Especially if we've already made that motion that we're downfield. We don't need to be looking back at the ball now. We've committed to. Those players down.
Referee and umpire looking at the pile.
Till the referee and the umpire has the pile, and maybe we can help with the rest of the players. But yeah, so clearly a illegal blind side block, would we say?
Least.
Yeah.
They all had a good look at that play.
Okay, this is, this, I don't know, it, it made me save this play, this is a nothing play. All right, here we go. Same game that we've been looking at. All right, so there's the ball, there's, now it's a judgment call, whether it's a catch, no cat, catcher. Fumble, and then what's your all's philosophy is regarding that, so here we go.
When in doubt, it's a catch.
Not an incomplete pass? You're calling it a catch?
He took. It's, it's sort of, again, George and I had a long talk about this too, he tucks it away and he takes a step. That's a, at least what it looks like, if he tucks it away, takes a step. That's a catch. He's got it. That, I mean, it's hard to see, but it looks like a catch on this video.
There, it looks like he has control of the ball right there.
Correct.
There's the contact.
And he turns to take a step.
So that's a good, good call for a fumble.
But where's the back judge? Where'd we start at? What was the?
It was. Yeah, it's a scrimmage play.
Started at the twenty-two.
Yeah, he should be at the forty-two-ish, he's not threatened, so the back judge should have been, I'm just making a comment, should have been much. Should be somewhere between the forty and the forty-five. There's no deep pattern.
Same action, so that same action on that catch, would you call it a touchdown?
Oh.
I think that, uh, I wanted to add something to that. I think that. The back judge is a little bit, is way too deep, cuz normally a back judge should be from the line of scrimmage. Anywhere from twenty to twenty-five yards, and I don't see the back judge anywhere around, because. That's what we normally discuss in our pre-games.
Correct.
That's when I bring that up, I usually try and get twenty-five yard back. So I think in this case here, the back judge is probably a little bit too deep.
So the other thing I think. That's missing, don't we bag this? Aren't we supposed to bag this? And I don't see, I don't see a bag coming out, but from the empire.
From anywhere.
Yeah. This would be the umpire bagging this, I presume, cuz he's closest to it.
It should be the back judge, like the comment was, he should be about the forty-five. He should have been looking right at this. And just dropped a bag as he ran by the forty.
Okay.
Hey Carl.
Yeah.
Hey, so the same action, if you have this in the back of the end zone, are you, are you gonna punch it as a touchdown with the ball on the ground? Say he completed the catch, contact, drop the ball, so punch it as a touchdown?
You, you mean if the, uh, if the defense recovers it and runs it in?
No, the same, the same action, say if it's in the back of the end zone.
Oh, the back of the end zone.
But Leonard, did he, okay, let me ask you, did he survive the ground? Because in high school also, you have to survive the ground. So was he going to the ground? If he caught this and took a step and was across the goal line and then happened to drop it, that's a touchdown.
If he had. Did he, did he complete the catch process? That's what I'm.
Well, and.
The same, the same action in the back of the end zone, you know, are we going up, saying touchdown with the ball on the ground? You know, you can easily say this is a fumble mid build. But, you know, that's a hard sell, and it's same, same situation, same play, but the catch is in the back of the end zone.
Right.
You know, that's a, that's a hard sell to punch it as a touchdown when the ball's on the ground.
Right, I think.
You know, I'm just saying, you know, it looks better when you're consistent, so if this is a incomplete back of the end zone, it should be incomplete in the middle of the build.
Yeah, one more step would have been nice, huh, Leonard? He was a runner, he was a runner for sure, but one more step would have really sold it. He was a runner. He was a runner for sure, but one more step would have really sold it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But. High school requires the least amount of, that's the problem. Like we have the least amount of what is a catch. That the rulebook I was just reading, it's pretty clear. Like you have to touch it and possess it and, and he does that. Where college and NFL have these other sort of more voluminous criteria than we do. It, Leonard's right. It's a hard sell, but this guy's a.
He almost goes, he almost goes two yards with it. I mean, as you watch, it's almost two yards, the ball itself.
Yeah, so it's really close. It's a, it's a bang, bang play for sure.
You have to watch it at real speed too, to really make a judgment. You can't watch it in slow ball.
Okay, let's just look at it one more time. Yeah, I don't know. It sounds like we might be fifty-fifty on this one. I don't know.
It's tough. That's a tough one. That's a good.
That's why there ain't many of us doing it, right?
Good, good video.
Here's another, here's another play from the same game. So we've got. Player from the offense, a, a player from A and a player from B that we're pointing arrows at. So let's watch what happens here. You wanna see it at full speed? And then we'll slow it down. Nothing, nothing was called, but.
That same game again?
Same game.
Yep.
So let's watch the, let's watch the brown player and the white, the player from the white team. Here we go. Here comes the contact. Simultaneous contact, opposing teams.
Got a blindside block on each team?
I, I think so. Offsetting blindside blocks.
Seems fair to me.
But you know what? This would be hard to pick up.
Uh, some superhuman might get it on the field. It's easy to watch here on TV, but.
Oh, yeah, it's easy to watch here. Second guessing, absolutely.
Or you would see one or the other.
Yeah.
I don't know, a superhuman would see both, but I don't know how you would see at best one or the other.
Yeah.
Unless two officials see it from the two ankles and go, hey, I got a blind side. Well, hey, I got one too.
So I think.
So I, so you bring this to me and we have a discussion. I got a blindside block on Brown. I got a blindside block on White. Okay, what are we gonna do? Should we pick it up and just call it the play good? If, cause if we're going to, we're going personal foul on both, we're bringing it back and replaying the down.
You offset. You have to, you have to count both of those. Otherwise you're saying it wasn't a problem. You're gonna get tensions if you don't get them both. This game management, you gotta go offsetting. You gotta give the signal and everything. Blindside block number so-and-so that way. Blindside block number so-and-so that way. Penalty's offset, replay the down.
Yep. I, I agree with you, Steve.
Yeah, it's game management.
Okay. All right, this is, this is me. At the L. So I'm paying too much attention to the line. Okay, it's gonna be a running play. I think, I think it was. But this gets blown up. So we'll talk about, can the back judge help us with this? What, what his, his or hers keys are? So I did flag the taunting. Okay, so what do we have here? So first of all, do we have a balanced formation? Do we have a balance? Okay, so what's the back judge's key?
Line judge side.
Line judge side.
Line judge side, so. Maybe, maybe the back judge could help with this. I need to get a wider view. That's what I learned from this. I got, I asked a lot of feed, for a lot of feedback on this. What could I have done differently? And the predominant comments were, get a, get a wider view. Don't be so super focused on the line. But what's the foul? What's that foul? What's it called?
Show it again?
Anybody? What's the, yeah, it's in the rulebook.
It's like he led with the helmet.
So what's it called?
Spearing.
Spearing.
Yeah.
So.
It's the top of the helmet. It's spearing.
So I missed. I missed the spearing call, but I got the tauntings. I got the, the dead ball taunting. But this should have been a thirty-yard penalty, right?
Yeah.
So. Could the back judge help with this? Now, now, maybe the initial key for the back judge is the L. But now the chain, play is a running play to the H side. What does the back judge do as far as changing their focus?
Well, when the back, back judge, when, when, even though he's strong to the line judge's side. When the play develops and it's going over to the linesman's side. He should start mo- motioning, moving himself over to that side to help out. At the same time, he should keep his eyes over on this guy right here. I just think that the back judge should have moved over to help out just to, in case. I, I don't see him anywhere in this play.
But, but look at the, on that weak side, those two guys are engaged. Like there's, there's two blockers, two guys. You, so you got stuff on one hash. Uh, yes, those. And then you got a dude over on, on the sideline with Carl. And yeah, so, uh, that. Again, I, it's a tough one for back judge. This is a good play. I mean, there's woulda, shoulda, coulda. But it would be hard, once you read run to that side, not to help out, because there are challenge, there are guys, there are blocks right there. That are really your blocks. They're inside the hash.
Well, I, I agree with that. My only question I have is. I don't even see the back judge moving at any point, if he could have, to this side over here, to the line ju, to the linesman's side. Cause it helped out, you know, I. You're right, would have, could have, should, maybe of, I guess.
We don't know either. We don't, we didn't have a, do we have a big enough view to know if he was again, starting thirty, forty yards deep like that other player? Was he twenty?
Yeah.
He, he or she.
Yeah, this was a tough one. I mean, with a five-person crew, I think was one of the comments. This would have been, this is just hard to pick up.
I, I think what this demonstrates better than anything is that we all have our zones. Then we need to carve up the entire field into our zones and, and keep that in our sight, right? It's like you said, Carl, if you were able to be a little bit wider. Um, I, I don't know that anyone else, by the time it's happening. That's, that's, that play's going right. So I'm sure the back judge is starting to come off of that area and go over.
Yeah.
Into the running action, so she, and the back judge probably has those blocks that are at the twenty-four yard line.
And I didn't, and I didn't start paying attention until I saw the guy doubled over. I said, something bad happened to him.
Yeah, yeah, no kidding.
So, okay.
Can you run that play one more time, please?
Yeah. Did you see something, Greg?
Yeah, it looks like, um, the defender in that number five. Uh, led with his helmet into his stomach. Maybe that was it. Watch, watch number five here, the defender. He goes helmet first into his stomach.
Yeah, that's spearing.
Yeah, yeah.
Leading with the helmet.
So by definition, helmet contact, section twenty of rule two. Now, article one, C, spearing is an act by any player who initiates contact against an opponent at the shoulders or below. With the crown or top portion of his helmet. Targeting, as article two, is an act by any player who takes aim and initiates contact against an opponent above the shoulders. With the helmet, forearm, hand, fist, elbow, or shoulders. So you know the difference in the, in the targeting and spearing and definitions.
Well, that, that does look like a spearing call.
Right. So the only way to make this legal is if he led with his shoulders. So. Okay, so we have another from the same game. And this isn't too, uh, too kinky, but just, just players just being stupid. So what was called? Was. Let's see, let me refer to what was called, because I watch, I always watch the play after to see what the enforcement was. Let's see. A personal foul was called on team B. So a personal foul was called on the Brown team. But if you watch. They're just both getting after it, right? And I think the reason it was called is right here. I think because the guy pulled him to the ground. B pulled A to the ground. But then if you watch A, I will see like a pounce, a punch or a pounce. Like right now, just drives his, kind of his right arm into him. So maybe offsetting personal fouls, I don't know.
And the same back judge, when the ball was snapped, was jumping and moving and twenty-seven yards off the ball.
So a little bit too far back.
Yeah, and moving again, you know, it's just, it's hard to pick that stuff up. The, I think it's hard when you're that far away. There's, there's a fine line about too far versus, you know, you wanna get a wide view, but also it's just a little too wide, I think.
So I think that's mutual stupidness. With the, with the added pounce from, from A, if you wanna kind of say, well, A should have been called for something. But just, just crazy stuff that happens. All the time. Can't happen anytime. Okay, so. I think we missed a couple of things here. So we got on the re, two receiving players. Let's kind of watch what happens and we'll slow mo it.
It jumped.
So. Okay. So the first contact is the, right here to the right. So we've got, uh. Our player. That is approaching a player that has no idea he's there, right? Now, is that illegal? Did he use open hands? There's some judgment there. But. He, maybe he did. Maybe that's legal. Now this next one, number five. I think he's just loading, he's loading the, the, the gun right there. Said, let me just clock this dude. So what do you think we have here?
You could at least argue the first one was in the side. The second one is a blindside block.
Yeah.
The guy goes sideways. So you could at least say, okay, marginal, I'm not gonna flag that one, but we gotta get number five. Somebody does.
Right.
We, that's the, that's the play we want out of the game, right? That one. He, he does the same effect if he just stands there. It's just as good a block.
Umpire should have had that one.
Yeah, just blew him up.
That's right about where the referee is gonna get ready to hand him off, but it, that's between the umpire and referee.
Okay, so let me. Give a little context to this one. This was, I think I. I might have showed something a few weeks ago on this one. This was a game that I had that. Basically it was a fifty pointer at halftime. Okay, we already had one UC against the coach in the first quarter on my sideline. And we're, it's fifty to nothing and we're getting close to halftime. So game's gonna be over, right? There's only gonna be like three plays left with this scrimmage kick, all right? And the key, team that's getting blasted is. The kicking team, I think, trying to remember. Uh, no. Okay, so first of all, what's, do you have any concerns with the coverage on this scrimmage kick?
Back judge got overrun.
He did.
So I, I, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carl. Uh, the judge is, is way out of position there. Either he was too close, he got around it. It looked like he was actually too close to the receiver initially on the punt. Can we start from the beginning on that one, Carl?
Sure, sure.
Yep.
It shows like he's too close there. He should have been at least five to ten yards away from him.
And behind him.
And behind him, yes.
And it looks like he's two yards. We just see a glimpse of it.
Yes.
See, two yards.
Yeah, two yards. And then it looks like he's moving over to the linesman's side right about here on the forty.
So the.
He's fading back, oh, and then the back judge is, he's just way out of, he's just way out of position there.
So I think the ball's in flight here. So another thing I was just curious about, I don't know, uh. Okay, the ball hits the ground. Now is it just anybody's? Can we, can we do anything we want to the R receiving team now?
No, no.
Is there, does he still have, in other words, the question is. It, can he still catch the, do we have to allow him to catch the ball even though it hit the ground?
No, it's, it's receiving team's ball if nobody does nothing.
Okay, so is it okay to contact R? It's not kick catch interference, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
It would not be kick catch interference.
Cause the ball contacted the ground.
Yes, you could have a personal foul or something nasty.
Okay.
But, you know, he can do things to get to a loose ball. It's just that. On a punt, uh, you know, you're gonna not really wanna get to that loose ball. You wanna let it roll to the end zone if you're the kicking team.
So here the guy, uh, 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 K wraps R up. What if, what if he sends R into the ball? What happens? And, and R touches the ball because he's been tackled into the ball. It's now a live ball? Anybody's ball?
It's still ignored.
No, he can't, he can't, uh, um, K can't shove R into the ball.
He can, but it's ignored, right? It's still not gonna be considered.
Yeah, like if he, you could, you would assume he's going for the ball. I agree.
Yeah, he can.
Touch, yeah.
Yeah, it looks more like he's gonna tackle him and throw him down, more like a.
Still the receiving team's ball, even if he touched, if he's pushed into the touch, it's still the receiving team's ball.
Okay, okay. That was my, that was my roundabout way of saying the same thing. Okay.
Right.
Okay, so. All right, so now we see the nastiness here. Okay. All right, coming into your screen to the right. Boom.
Oh, nice.
Okay, that, that, there's twenty seconds left in the game. It's fifty to nothing. It's gonna be halftime. Left in, in the first half, okay? The coach loses his absolute mind, okay? He's going ballistic. My thought, I had that sideline. I said, you know what? Twenty seconds, let's just get to the locker room. I don't wanna throw the coach out, but the white hat had enough. He could hear the coach screaming on the sideline and, and gave him the second UC. He deserved the second UC. He deserves it, absolutely.
Did we get the penalty though?
The coach, the coach on the white team. Was the, I, I was the H. The coach on the white team lost his mind that we missed this blindside block. Okay, and, and. And now, and all I wanted.
Field, what, what did he do?
No, he was F-bombing, just screaming to the top of his lungs. That's ridiculous. Player safety, you don't care, you know? And add all the expletives in there with twenty seconds to go. And the white hat just said, you know? And the white hat just said, you know, no. So I reflected on that, I should, that, that was my job. I just was selfish and said, let's get to the game management, let's get to the locker room, but we ended up tossing the coach and had to do an incident report.
I mean, it, it was still gonna be the receiving team's ball, you're just gonna penalize him fifteen yards from the. End of the play succeeding spot, right? I mean.
Yeah, but it, 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 it's, it's the fact he was getting pistol with fifty and up, okay?
Wait a second, wait, wait a second. Before we start, go back.
Okay.
Go back. We had. K tackling R without possession of the ball. No, back further, Carl.
Yeah, it's right, the guy that was gonna make, be the.
We have K, we have a penalty on K, cause he tackled. Keep going back. You're going back. Right there. Loose ball, ball hasn't been touched, K tackles R.
But what, he had the ball?
He didn't have the ball.
He didn't have the ball. There was no, no control of the ball, no possession.
See, I was gonna ask you guys if that's not holding. He's not, he cannot be guilty of kick catch interference, but why, it's at least holding, isn't it?
No, okay, cause it, from his angle, he doesn't know if the guy possessed the ball or not. Right? So he can, he can ta, you can tackle somebody that you think is a runner. You can also.
But you're still responsible for that play.
Pretty generous.
But you can, I mean, he's pursuing the ball, he can throw him to the ground and try to get to a loose ball.
Well, but he clearly doesn't. That's not what he's doing here. He, he jumps on top of the guy.
Back it up to right where it happens. The ball is right in front of the plate, of the receiving team player. See that?
The ball's right here. It, it's, it's been rolling on the ground.
No, it was in the air.
No, it hit the ground, it struck the ground already.
And bounced up.
It bounced up.
Bounced, stuck to ground, bounced up, so it's in the air when, when he. So right here, he tackles him without possession of the ball.
It's not a, it's, he doesn't have to let him catch it, there's no kick catch interference. So, is there a rule against tackling somebody that you think has the ball? There's not.
No.
But if this was a handoff up the middle that was a fake handoff? Okay, you can tackle the guy that doesn't have the ball.
Yeah.
He thinks he's got the ball.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree.
I, I see your point, that's a good point. It'd be harsh, it's hard, it would be harsh to flag him for something here.
Especially if, if he doesn't have the ball, he still can push him even in the back as long as it's not a personal foul to get to a loose ball. Right?
Well, you can push in the back if you're trying to get to a loose ball. There's not even, there's, there's no block in the back on a loose ball and a fumble. Yeah, to me, this is a loose ball, you're not, this is just football on a loose ball.
Alright, okay.
For two reasons, right? For that reason and for the fact that he might just be trying to make a tackle.
So now we have possession and a return. So now we have a runner and a return.
Yeah.
And then we have the block.
And this is my ball. You gotta, you gotta get that every time.
So again, I don't, I think.
Twelve minutes or five seconds left on the.
Yeah, you're, you're one hundred percent right. One hundred percent right, so. This is, this is probably a personal dead, another personal foul, it's not a blindside lot. I mean, a personal blindside block is a personal foul, but you know what I mean? This is a. Way from the play, this wants to hurt somebody.
So those are, those, what you see are the, the players in the back, so this is a, this is our call. R's picking up all this garbage.
Yeah.
The other thing is, it, it's potential ejection as well, and that would have an effect on the next week, right? So. You know, there, there could be something there.
Yep.
The head linesman obviously is not really looking at it. Didn't look like it, it should be, the R guy is to be down there in that end.
Yeah.
But somebody should have got it, no doubt.
Yeah. It's just the craziness that happens on scrimmage kicks and free kicks.
Do we have a personal foul and, and we're talking a possible flagrant, but you notice at the end he kicked up too, right?
Even had tripping on top of it, huh?
Yeah, so now we might have, we actually might have, go ahead and see if you can get up there, Carl.
Yeah, offsetting penalties.
If we look at the, eh, eh, at the total end of it, if this case, if this, if White's retaliating against this obvious. Blindside block or, or flagrant foul, if our, if White's now retaliating.
Yep.
Then we have offsetting.
We're gonna punt again.
And are we punting again?
No, cause they were dead ball.
Cause it, well, yeah, and, and we had possession and return on. On the return.
Did he trip him or did he kick him in?
He kicked him, he.
He kicked him up, yeah, he kicked.
He kicked him in the chest, yeah.
He kicked, he kicked him up.
Yeah, it's not good.
Yeah, it, it's just.
Not a good look on either team, but.
Fifty, fifty, fifty to nothing, he's just frustrated. So yeah, he kicked him up. Said, here, let me launch you.
Okay, okay, yeah, that one's real clear.
Yeah, he looked like a donkey.
Okay, okay, so then the next two are side, want the sideline in the end zone. You might remember from last, I think it was last week, remember the, uh, the referee that wasn't engaged when the coaches were upset and came on the field? Okay, I don't know, y'all remember that one?
Yeah, this, this, both coaches came on.
This is, this is the scrimmage kick. That happened, okay, so we got a lot of stuff going on here, so we're gonna see two different views of this, of the. Calls, no calls, however you wanna judge it, so. Alright, so here's the first call that was made.
Should have been a call.
Okay.
Hold, maybe.
Here, and you, and you, and I think from the end zone view, you have a real clear look to where you, I think we could, we could judge, is, is it a call or no call? And man, I'll tell you what, this, uh, this line judge needs to play for some professional baseball team. Cause he chucked that flag thirty yards, telling you. He wanted to get it to the spot. Alright. That's the play that hurt the player, okay? The coaches came on the field, the player's down, he's hurt, he's, he's all crumpled up over here, okay? We got that going on. Okay.
Play's still going on, the coaches are.
So we're gonna slow. So we're gonna slow it down and dissect this thing, both views. Okay, so what do we have here? Cause this was, this was, this was what was flagged and enforced.
Like a block in the back.
Doesn't look like anything, really.
Okay.
I thought.
And you can see, here's the line judge is winding up to throw this, this flag to the middle of the field.
And he, he has the worst angle, that's a, that's the, that, that first initial block is a back judge call all the way. All he should be looking at is the first two challengers in front of him.
And, and, and actually it would be, yes, and it was flagged by the back judge.
Okay, I, we don't have an end zone view, but the, it's pretty hard for the line guy to see that, but the back.
They, they, they both flagged.
Okay.
Okay, alright, so then here we go, there goes the flag, see it in the air, right here?
Yep. He chucked it.
He chucked that dude. Alright, so here we come. Now look at this, okay? This is a potential blindside block or block in the back. But, what's the criteria for blindside block, right? We go watch. Okay, now guys, now, now he's hurt and the coaches are gonna come all fired up on the field. Okay, so then we have. I, uh, my arrow went away, but right here, let me back it up. I, I picked up on this, do we have anything here? Right here.
So is that the same guy that made the, we'll put in air quotes, blindside block? And then, then a black player tries to retaliate or blue, brown or whatever color, the darker colored uniform, tried to retaliate against the same guy? That's a question mark.
Yeah, that's, it could be, there was, there was so, so many of these, so we'll go on to the end zone view. And I'll just slow it down to start with, so we could just dissect it, cause we've already seen.
Has good position, alright.
Yeah, looks good.
Okay, so here comes, here comes the R blocker. Do you have anything there?
No.
No.
Okay, so that, that, that's what was flagged.
Looks like it's on the side.
So here, here comes the potential blindside block that ended up hurting, the guy was hurt. That, he was all crumpled up on the field and the coaches were ticked. And then here comes the other one, right here. We have anything there? Probably not.
A flag on the first, on the blindside from the umpire, it looked like. I don't know, who is that? That's the wing.
Okay. Yeah, the, the, uh.
The wing is way out past the hash mark, right?
Yeah, that, that, that blindside, that, that was flag. The one where the kid got hurt?
Yeah.
It was, it was flag.
By the wing. Okay.
Well, it was flagged, yeah, this guy.
Yeah, yeah, he's pretty far on the field.
Yeah, yeah, it was flagged, so, okay, so anyway. So then, you know, like, they're all upset, so do you think this was a legal or illegal blindside block? I guess is the question.
Did he lead with his chest?
He, he looks like he led with his hand, his open hands. It's a better view from the sideline, I think. But that looks like open hands, that looks legal to me.
And again, can you, can you argue that the, the dark jersey is involved in the play? It looks like he's pursuing, he has an angle, the other guy has a reasonable angle, he doesn't launch. Certainly doesn't launch, that, it, it looks like a legal block.
I really do think it is. See, look at his arms, his arms are extended, his arms are extended. And what I do, I'll tell you, this is just what I, if I see a le, a good legal blindside block, I compliment the coach or even the players. That's the way to do it, that's the way to teach it. Not to go in and chuck them with your forearm or shoulder. Okay, because we are trying to get that out of the game. That looks legal to me, and, and I'm thinking, well, the player's hurt, he's on the ground.
Yeah, it's football.
So.
By definition. It is a blindside block. In the set, the blindside block is a block against an opponent other than the runner who does not see the blocker approaching. However.
They can't see the blocking, blocker approach, you need blind as hell.
Yeah, but then the penalty nine four three N. Um, it says executing a blindside block outside of the free blocking zone with forceful contact. Unless initiated with open hands. So it's legal to quote unquote, blindside block if you're initiating with open hands.
So here, here he is. Does he have open hands?
Looks like.
And the, the comment that. Coaches will often say, how, well, how do I coach that? How do I coach that out of the kid? Well, we, and I, my comment is. Have him use open hands, if he uses open hands, we got nothing. It could be close to a block in the back, but this was from the side. The, it, by definition is a blindside block, but is executed with open hands.
It looks like his right arm is wrapping around it. Am I missing something there?
Still, it's still legal blindside block, looks like to me.
Even if his right arm is wrapped around him?
Yeah, I, it, the, the defender's head is the most telling, like his head, his head doesn't move. And when these guys do the blindside, they lower the head and lower the shoulder, look, his head never moves, never. See, he's straight up. Uh, if the contact is not in the back, this is, this looks pretty legal, unless the contact is in the back. As, uh, as you guys just, as Brad just said.
And even if he pushes through with his hands.
Yes.
That's fine, if he chucks them and.
Well, isn't there something in there about his hands gotta be extended out front?
No.
Gotta be extended out.
Doesn't say that.
It, it's also legal to do a basketball screen, and I would say this, in this case, there's more of a chest contact. The initial contact is with the chest, and then he does follow through with that right arm.
Both the initial contacts with the chest, we got a blindside block. No, no, that's a basketball screen.
Not if the contact is forceful.
I agree, and this is on the hairy edge of that, right?
It is.
And what I saw was the chest come together and then I saw a follow through with the arm, open hand.
So.
As they were coming together, the defender had his arms out in front of him.
So, so here's what, here's what was, here, here's what was penalized, just FYI, okay? The penalty enforced was a block in the back, okay? So that tells me, that tells me, is this, is this an umpire? Now, this is an umpire, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so what that tells me, he's the one that flagged it, that tells me he saw that as a blind, as a block in the back, not a personal foul, blindside block. Because that, the enforcement was blocking the back and both fouls, both fouls that were flagged. You know, were against the receiving team. So you can only enforce one of the two fouls and they were both, and so. They enforced the block in the back instead of, so that's what he, that's obviously what he called, I guess is what I'm trying to say, right? It's obvious. That he called a block in the back, because that's what was enforced, not a blindside block. So, anyway, just, just FYI. Alright, we have the last play. This is a semifinal game. And just, I don't know if we want to give, uh, too much information upfront, but this is a star player. Who plays both offense and defense. Okay, so. There's, there's the quarterback going down, he's being tackled. Okay, did you see that subtly?
Did he taunt him?
Oh, this is the one where he stomped on him.
Oh, he stomped or stepped over him.
Nah, he stomped on him.
We, we talked about this Saturday. Let it play and watch the quarterback.
Looks like he kicked him right in the side.
Oh, the soccer kick.
Flag.
Where you, where you step up, where you pretend to step over, but you kick your foot into him.
Evan gets that one all night.
Yeah, soccer guys get, do it all the time, man, that's why, no, it's a soccer deal.
So we talked, we, we talked about this on Saturday, I talked with the actual umpire on this play. And if it's the same one where I'm thinking about, it's an ejection. It's a stomp on the, he stomped on him and then he was ejected, so.
So.
This is a semifinal game, winner goes to the finals. The, um, you'll have to fast forward to all of them.
I will, I, I got this, go ahead, keep talking.
It, so it's a. If the, um, the winner goes to the finals, right? And this is their star running back as well as one of their star court linebacker's. He, he's a stud for their team. Does that, does that play into, to affect here at all, on your good, whether he goes out or not?
No. Absolutely not.
Well, he stepped on the quarterback's knee, basically, right on the leg.
We don't, we don't care if he's a.
The guy was laying on his right side like this.
He could have taken that guy out.
Very good.
Brad, you saying the number two blue guy was, is the stud for the team in white?
We do that shit all the time, man.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, number two is the stud for the, the team, yeah.
Team in blue?
Yep.
We don't care if he's a stud for them or not, if he does something like that, he deserves to go.
Right.
So.
When guys step, yeah, when guys step over guys unnecessarily so, we, and again. When guys step, yeah, when guys step over guys unnecessarily so we and again, Wayne's right, I've learned it from soccer. We need to be suspicious. We just need to be suspicious. Like, he didn't have to step over this guy.
This wasn't a step over. This was a stomp on the guy's leg.
I know, I know that, but but he could have taken a jab to the left and gone around. The play is over. So I'm just saying in general, not this play, when a guy steps over a guy, we need unnecessarily, we need to be suspicious.
And I always talk to a player. If a player does that, I talk to him.
Right, I agree.
Step over. The step over is definitely a talk to.
I agree. Good, good management of that because it's a problem.
So it was flagged. He did get ejected. The blue team lost. Uh, to to finish the story, but. Um, it 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 did. Yeah, you're absolutely right. This is intent to injure. This is again, we talk about plays. We want to get out of the game. Um, to keep our game safe. And this is one of them. This is there's no reason for him to be doing this. So I agree with everything everybody said on this.
And 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 to top it off, as I understand it, the crowd went bananas and at this particular field, they they. They uh, tailgate their vehicles all the way around. They were like honking all their horns. Flashing all their lights to show their disdain or whatever disgust. Over the disqualification. So there was a quite a bit of a delay of the game, as I understand it, trying to get them to stop honking their horns.
There was also a potential altercation from a drunk fan at the end of this game. So you gotta be.
This was last last year semifinal.
So you guys got to stick together when you walk off and I do think they had security, but I think there was a drunk person that almost assaulted the umpire on this.
Oh, good officiating.
I agree. So I'm gonna stop recording at this time and um. This is a good place to stop. We can hang out for longer, but I'm gonna stop it.